Any great business hours you're going to need. Yes, Mayor orders the volunteer officer in the Guild. It's a small town and most artists around here are involved in many art-related organizations and projects. Perhaps Mr. Peracini is confusing the Art Guild with the Aberdeen Arts Center. These are completely separate entities. The Aberdeen Arts Center, which first opened in 2015, is Mayor Or's business. The nonprofit Harvard Art Guild on the other hand was founded in 2008 by a group of local artists. For several years, the Guild operated a gallery. But once it closed its gallery, it turned its focus to obtaining grants for community projects such as Paul and Andrew Park at the Senior Center, the well-attended annual rainwater festival, and the Adore Project, which provides scholarships to varying teens. Today, the Guild has over 50 members and is involved in these and many more individual and group projects. The Guild does these things for the community of Aberdeen. Who withhold monies from the Guild based on incorrect information because you're not in their home group? And in defiance of the city attorney's finding of no conflict, is simply wrong and may effectively deny the people of Aberdeen very positive community events and projects. I ask you to please renew the formerly included fund in the Art Guild. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like this?
Council members, my name is Wes Bolton, Aberdeen resident. For 24 years, I was the executive director of Graves Harbor Historical Seaport, which is a municipal nonprofit. And the issues of conflict of interest, I have a very good understanding of. And we're a small community. And I'm guessing 20% of the people in this room are involved with a nonprofit. And our local nonprofits need all the help that they can get. And politicizing hotel motel tax funds, it's counterproductive to what you as council members should be doing. You should be supporting the growth of our organization, of our community. And when you look at how the whole hotel motel tax fund is set up, it's the people who contribute the money. And the people who aren't receiving the money come together and they decide and make a recommendation to you, the council. This is the best way, this is the way that we want to spend the tax dollars that you can spend on anything else, just on hotel motel promotion. This is how we want that money spent. This is the way that we feel is the best way to spend that money. And your job is to listen to the people that you've put in charge of making that decision. So please, you know, support your nonprofits, get involved. And you know, the conflict of interest is when is when you are personally benefiting from actions undertaken. And that has not been the case. And if we paid attention, that's not going to be the case. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. On tonight's agenda, there is a recommendation to table an MOU for a bureau on the side of the proposed historic museum. Two meetings ago, it was passed almost unanimously, but this was a good idea. One member felt, and I think it's because he's had a personal interest in his property across the street, that this is not an appropriate use of money. That it was too early, signs would be taken off of the building. We don't know what's going to happen to the building. And he said, I said, it's going to be two years before, at the earliest, before the museum opens. I would like to suggest that you do not change, do not disapprove the MOU and approve Danny Fisher's thing. Approve a small mural, which is on portable boards, which are attached to the building, which can be moved exactly the same way as the Nirvana Museum. Nirvana mural was moved from the Moore Building to the building next door. And what I would suggest it should say, currently it says in the museum, this is the Aberdeen History Museum. I would suggest it says, the future home of the Aberdeen History Museum. The reason I suggest this is that so many projects around here are need to die, need to go away. People aren't aware of what might happen. If that sign is up there on the side of the building, it will be a lot more difficult for people who think that there's more important things in the history museum to use funds for. So I believe it would be a mistake not to put a mural temporary on the side of the building. Finally, we have raised the money for the mural. But we have raised the money only for that mural. We cannot use it for anything else. Therefore, we will have to return the money to the providers of that money likely. So I suggest you have a fully paid mural, fully transportable. And I expect that this would be an excellent way of announcing to everyone going by that in the future, there will be a museum in that building. I thank you for your thoughts.
Could you provide your name and license? Sir, could you provide your name and your worth?
Oh, my name is, I thought everybody, last one.
For the record.
For the record, my name is Michael Dickerson. Ward one. Four.
Thank you.
And this whole thing was brought up because sometime ago, the transportation bureau was being destroyed across from the transit center. We thought that we could save it. We thought there were two ways to do it. One is to repaint it on boards on the side of the museum, which is the only place that has long enough space to run it, since it's 120 feet long. And the other way was to take it photographic and transfer that to the same kind of material that's used for bus wraps, put that on boards and attach it to the side of the museum.
That's your three minutes, Mr. Dickerson. Thank you. I'm done.
We could not do either because the visual representation on that board, on that mural, is too far into the dark. So it could not be seen, only the front part of it. So a decision was made not to do it that way, and we came up with this alternate. I thank you for your time. I'm starting more. I do that for a little diary.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I'm Jerry Selfrum, Ward one. And it's my privilege to represent Noah Junior High. One of the main reasons I'm here and will be on the agenda later is on January 28th of the year this year, Noah Junior High will celebrate its 100th anniversary. It was also the very first junior high in the state of Washington. Now, when I retired as principal in 1999, we celebrated 75 years. So I've been thinking about this for 25 years. I didn't really retire and I'll have 55 years in the margin of company. But this is an opportunity for us to celebrate a very important part of our community, and that's our kids. And so first, I'd like to invite everybody. And what I'd like to ask is anybody here, either in the audience or the council, that has a business or a place where you have public visibility. I have two posters here announcing our program. One of them is for a time capsule that the kids are putting together. This was designed by our eighth grade added class. And so we'd like to put those up so we get ideas from people or donations and things they think they would like to see in the time capsule. The other one is just one announcing the program itself, and this has been on Facebook. This came from one of my former mascoots from 1981, 82. David heard about this through our friends at the museum, did this Saturday night and sent it to me. And so we're looking for something to advertise, we did a wonderful job on it. So I'm going to put these on the table. I didn't bring enough for everybody here. So just those people that have public places where people can see this, please pick them up and put them up. I'd like to thank Debbie today. She was the first one I gave one to because I wanted her to get my haircut today and she said she couldn't. So again, I invite everybody on 28th, the program starts at 2:00. We'll have a program for about an hour and then two more hours until 5:00, we'll have an open house. The kids of it are decorating the entire school by decades with a lot of things we've gotten from the museum of history and then things we've had at school too. So I think it's going to be a fantastic program and I hope everybody will take to our community to come. Thank you.
Any more public comment? I'd like to close public comment and move on to the consent agenda.
All right, I'd like to refer to tonight's consent agenda that includes the last meeting's minutes, accounts payable, payroll, and the December homeless report.
First and second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the minutes from the last meeting under the swearing-in of newly-elected council members. My name was not noted, so it should be unconsidered. Thank you.
So am I making the motion? Okay, so a motion to amend the previous minutes to include councilperson Seidel. Second, in discussion. Paul and Denver.
Aye.
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 Motion. Motion carries.
All right, I'd like someone to go to a presentation regarding the North Aberdeen Bridge project by David Evans and Associates.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Kyle Fisher. I work here at the City of Aberdeen and engineering. I'm the city's project manager for the Great Project. And I'm very excited for this project. I thought it'd be a good idea for me to get up here really quick, introduce myself, put a face of my name and get out of the way, and then pass it off to the DEA who was doing the presentation. So our consultant DEA put together a nice presentation for us. They kind of goes over kind of the introduction of the Great Project, little bit of background, some financial stuff about the project. And then, most importantly, kind of what the next steps are for the project, including, most importantly, the community outreach and engagement portion. So I urge everybody here, the council, staff, and even the citizens to engage in this process. And we really intend that. Thank you.
Okay, are we prepared for the slides? I'll do a quick introduction of myself first. Can you guys hear me okay? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Deborah Seaman, and I'm a civil engineer. I'm also the project manager on the consultant team for David Evans and Associates. We have a couple of sub consultants on our team as well, so but DEA is the prime consultant. So Kyle and I are kind of tag teaming leadership on this project. I'm a civil engineer by background. Grew up in Aberdeen. I went to Robert Gray Elementary. I currently work in our Olympia office. And I've been involved in the East Aberdeen Mobility US 12 Highway Rail Separation Project as well for the last 10 years, supporting the city through DEA. Currently now with NIF on that project. So I've got a lot of familiarity with the city of Aberdeen, what it was like in the 70s and 80s when I grew up here, including the muddy banks of the Wishka River, which were just down the road. So we'll start off and I'll just give you a heads up when I get to the next slide. So the next slide's going to be a vicinity map of the project. Let's start from the beginning. And then, with that, we're going to get to the next one. From your down arrow. Yeah, just continue. I know council members at least have a packet, a printout copy of the slides as well. So if you're not able to see the screen from where you're sitting, that might also be a helpful resource. Go with this. All right, that's as big as we're going to get it? Okay. So most of you probably know where the bridge is located. But if you haven't driven across it, it's the Young Street Bridge heading into North Aberdeen. So it's really the only connection to North Aberdeen for vehicles other than coming up and over Think of Me Hill, which is very difficult to traverse if you're anything other than a little maus that niata. So this existing structure, next slide, was built in 1956. Approximately 300 feet long, 30 feet wide, so there is two lanes of traffic. Not very safe for pedestrians or bikes. There's a very narrow shoulder slash sidewalk. And it has been inspected over the years, and it is rated as structurally deficient. And the technical terms are, well, there's multiple things wrong with it, but sheer capacity, scouring at the piers, which is what is holding up the bridge. And those are being undermined and eroded. And it's also been posted for reduced traffic load. So only one truck can go across the bridge at a time, which is not very convenient. So there's a lot of safety problems with this. Next slide. It's also what we would call in the engineering world is functionally obsolete and doesn't meet current standards for vehicle language, shoulders. There's a lack of safe pedestrian and bicycle facilities on it. The traffic barriers on the edges are also substandard. The list is long of things that we would need to fix on this bridge. So the city has applied for and received a federal grant. This is through the, a federal grant, but it's going to be administered through the Washington State Department of Transportation. They're local programs. This is a bridge, we call it BRAC funding, bridge replacement and rehabilitation. So every year, that group in WashDOT finds the worst-rated bridges and evaluates all of the applications and then awards grant funding based on basically the lowest score of wins. So we received $23.1 million for this federal grant. And this will cover the design phase, the right-of-way acquisition phase, if there's any necessary, and also then the full construction. So everything we do on this project needs to fit within those bookends of $23.1 million, including the consultant's agreement contract is within that dollar amount. Again, the project delivery team is led by Kyle here in the city and then a consultant team made up of David Evans and Associates, Sage Geotechnical, Exalt Tech, and our cultural resource consultant. So the first step, when we look at a project like this, we're going to look at all the constraints. If you're building a puzzle, you're going to put your edge pieces in first, work towards the middle. So what we're going to start looking at is all of our edge constraints, all those edge pieces. One of them is the Kurt Cobain Memorial, located in the west quadrant of the bridge. And it's very near and dear to many of our hearts. It's locally known, it's nationally known, it draws visitors from all over the world. We know that this is a critical element of the project. And we have a very thorough alternatives analysis process that will incorporate things like this constraint into the process. And I can touch on that here a little bit in the presentation. Next one, there are several existing utilities around the project site that we'll have to accommodate. On the bridge, we have sanitary sewer, forest main, there's a water line. So these facilities are serving North Aberdeen and are their critical link for utilities. This will come into play when we look at construction, staging, and opportunities of how we keep these utilities operational during the project. There's also overhead power communications. The power is distribution and you have to do it with more investigation. But we know that those power poles on the east side are going to be challenging as well. There's an underground gas tank on the west side of the bridge that goes under the riverbank that we'll have, we are locating with hazbills and our surveyors out in the field. There's also a 24-inch storm outfall in the north face coming from North Aberdeen that we want to avoid or re-rensign. The next constraint is the North Shore Levy Project. The footprint of that project and our project do overlap in the area of the Kurt Cobain Memorial. So we'll be working with that team as the design is refined. So those are going to be two concurrent tasks. We need to find a good solution together so that we're not tearing up each other's work and hopefully getting some economy of scale and possibly using the levee structure to incorporate into either retaining walls or grading elements near the Kurt Cobain project. So this project has several objectives. And with each objective, we want to point out the benefits as we work through those objectives. So the first one in that upper left blue box, the whole goal of the project and using that $23 million is to provide a structurally sufficient access across the Wishka River to North Aberdeen and keep that lifeline alive. So providing a new access will also reduce city costs for future bridge repairs and maintenance. That's one of the benefits. We do need to work within the $23.1 million project grant. And by achieving that goal, we will avoid needing to find additional funding sources. As part of that grant, $23 million, the city was also notified that if we can obligate our construction funding, which basically means we're done with the design, we're done with the right-of-way, and we're ready to tell DOT that we want to start construction. If we obligate that money by September of 2026, we avoid a 13% local match. So the benefit is if we can meet that timeline, which we will do all in our capability to meet that, we will avoid having to come up with $3 million out of the city funds for the local match.
Do you want us to hold questions or can we ask questions now?
Your choice. I've been with either.
Is there anything that you can foresee at this moment that would potentially forestall our ability to obligate the funding by September 26 or maybe even get it or do it earlier?
We've done a preliminary project schedule, building in the design elements, the alternative analysis, the environmental permitting, and right-of-way acquisition and assume basically worst-case scenarios for these type of projects. And we feel very comfortable that we can hit that September 26.
Thank you.
Next goal is to minimize impacts to the surroundings. And there's a lot of things that will fall in that box. The Kurt Cobain Memorial, environmental, the riverbank, the vegetation, the levee project, making sure we have a cohesive solution. And last, we want to maintain vehicle access to North Aberdeen during construction. So one thing that is very important in the design process that our team is aware of is we can't just look at the end product on paper of like, here's what the solution is. We have to get to that end solution. And the construction staging is always a very critical element of that and how you can build something or repair something and still keep access open to North Aberdeen. So that will be a huge element in our alternatives analysis process.
I see.
Yes.
So I assume that means that the existing bridge will stay in place during construction and that the new bridge that will go up will be, have to be relocated to some other, either further to the east or west of the current location?
That is one option, and there are multiple options. And we have a process in our alternatives analysis phase that we will be brainstorming any of those scenarios possible. What we'll do is we'll come up with four, five, six alternatives and concepts that will accommodate those staging constraints. And then we put construction costs to them. And this will be another slide that I get to in a minute. But that would be one of the options, but there are more.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. So this flowchart is kind of cartoon of what our project delivery schedule looks like. The yellow band up top is just telling you, running left to right across our timeline, that there's going to be a public outreach process throughout the entire project. It'll involve some open houses, some council presentations. And then you drop down to that middle bar and the left kind of burnt umber reddish color, research and investigations. That's our first set of tasks. We started that work, our surveyors have started out in the field, done some hydrographic surveying along the river. They'll be out here coming next week, all next week, they'll be doing some more topographic surveying, do a 3D scan of the bridge on the top and the bottom so that we have very accurate information of the existing condition. We're doing research on all the permitting that is required, all the utilities that are on site. So that's the first step. And then all of that information will feed into the next box, the blue box, which is alternatives analysis phase. I'll go into another, more detail on the next slide for that blue box, but just big picture. Oh, for the, please, Alice.
Have you notified the public that your team is going to be out here being?
Yes. So we also sent letters to all the surrounding property owners, got right-of-entry letters approved from them if we had to go onto their property to get any survey shots. So there has been a notice and then individual letters. Thanks for the point well. So after the alternatives analysis phase and we get to a preferred alternative, there's three bands of work. The yellow box, which is preliminary and final design, that's basically coming up with the plans, the construction plans that we'll hand over to a contractor. The box below that, environmental approvals, that's going through the NEPA process, the federal environmental approval process, which is triggered by the federal funds. We'll have SEPA, National Environmental Policy Act. There's several permits we have to get from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, Corps of Engineers, Coast Guard. There's a long list. And there's another huge flowchart for that as well. So that, we have to assign a fairly lengthy portion of the schedule as well to get all those approvals because some you can't get until you get another approval first. And then the bottom box, the brown box, right-of-way, if we have to purchase any permanent right-of-way or temporary access. That will also be occurring while the design is being prepared. Then we've been obligating the construction funding dollars in September 2026, which you need all of those other steps completed before you can obligate dollars. Basically, you're telling WashDOT that you have all of your checklist done and you're ready to go to construction. Any questions on kind of that overall schedule before I dive into the alternatives analysis and how we're going to involve the public? Okay. So that blue box of alternative analysis has another flowchart, which was really, really messy according to Kyle before I got to this version. So hopefully, this will be easier to follow along. The first box, green, site research, that's the topographic surveying, the utility research. That's all that data that our design team and the stakeholders that we want to pull in will need as our foundation to start evaluating what kind of design solutions would be optimal. And we understand that this is a very high priority site for many in the community. So we brought in a very robust stakeholder involvement process into this bridge project and I will, you know, I've managed 15 bridge projects in my life and this is not the most extensive one, but it's one of the most extensive processes because typically a bridge doesn't draw this much attraction. Our bridge engineers are kind of humbled that their element of the project isn't the most important. It's really the community involvement. So we are developing a stakeholder outreach group. In the lower right-hand corner of that slide and the gray box, I've got two definitions of teams. There's a technical working group and a stakeholder outreach group that will contribute in this process with the consulting team. So the technical working group will be city staff that have kind of more of an engineering background, so Kyle, Nick, I think Rick, you got signed in there too, maybe Ruth, if you are interested. That group will get down into more of the nuts and bolts and the engineering type discussions. And then we're also going to bring in a group that we're calling the stakeholder outreach group, which will be more community-based. So it could be, you know, the, the transit director, the school district, fire, police, ambulance. We also want to bring in a couple of businesses, possibly the funeral home on the north side in that community that would have a lot of customers traversing that site. So we're in the process of developing that stakeholder group list and then we'll be sending out invitations to invite them into this process in February. And as I walk through these steps, I'm going to kind of highlight when the stakeholder group will be contributing and when it will be like a design team function or when it's all of us together. So the design team on the second box, the design team and the technical working group, the city engineering staff, we're going to identify all the issues and challenges that we could think of around the site and then refine the purpose and need statement for this. The purpose and need will be our bookends when we pull in the stakeholder group, like this is the edge pieces of the puzzle. This is what we get to work within on this, on this process. We will pull in the stakeholder outreach group in that fourth box up in the upper right corner where we start to brainstorm alternatives. Like you said, do we cut the existing bridge intact and build a temporary bridge on the side or access during construction? What are all those options and what do they look like? So we'll be sketching up content, concepts, it's, you know, scribbling on aerial photos, a lot of just brainstorming and getting things on paper and talking it through. And we'll have our technical staff there to also kind of guide that process. Then once we have all of those alternatives gathered up, cleaned up, we'll come back to the design team and the technical group, develop criteria that those alternatives will then be ranked with. Then the second to last box, we will narrow down with, actually, we're going to rank those alternatives with the stakeholder group. Then we'll narrow it down to the top two alternatives and then come back to the stakeholder group and rank those top two alternatives. That will ultimately lead down to that pink ellipse, which is selection of the preferred alternative. So this, this is a very sinuous process. We're, we're jumping up into stakeholder group, we're bringing it back down to the, the technical element and then going back up with information to the stakeholder group. So the importance is we keep this process moving if we want to hit that September 2026 date. Yes.
Deborah, I just wanted to recommend that your stakeholder groups include representatives from the forest product industry. That my understanding is the bridge weight capacity is perhaps most of a concern for that group. And if there's a way for them to to achieve lower loads that would help us with this project, it would be great to have them onboard as the design process.
Okay, I, I do know there's a lot of forest land up there to the north. There's a couple of different landowners up there that we've been researching, so thank you for that.
I'm assuming that at some point you're going to come before the council. I know stakeholder outreach group includes, it says here, council staff, but I assume that means the council, that you'll come before the council and ask us for our input and all alternative preferences and such. At what point, I'm assuming you're going to be asking the council to approve the final project? Is that the case?
I should back up. There are, there will also be some members on council invited to be in the stable, the outreach group, I think is the council or two and three. Two, no, three, one of them touches really close too. So Kyle and I had come up with a tentative list on some council members to invite. And yes, the very last slide that I have to get to, we'll walk through when we come back to you with presentations. But we will be coming to you in April to announce the top two alternatives. And we'll do an open house and then we'll come back in June.
This April? Wow, okay, great.
Yes, we, we're marching along. That, that flowchart needs to be shown on it as well.
Thank you.
So yes, we hope to have our preferred alternative identified by June of 2024. We, we want to get to the right answer and we understand we're going to go kind of slow upfront to get to the right answer. But the way that we've mapped out this schedule to hit the September 2026, which is this next slide, we definitely want to get a decision made this summer so that we can then start preparing all the other things that are feeding from the design, like the environmental permits and the right-of-way impacts and the actual construction plans. So we, on, on this slide here, the second band, the blue band, the alternatives analysis, we hope to conclude in June. Our environmental permitting process will start a little bit before we know our preferred alternative. But because some of that stuff we can get a jump on, some of it we can't do until we know the preferred alternative. But we, we've got about a year and a half for that process canceled out. And then the actual design efforts, the yellow band, yellow ochre? There's a lot of artists in there. Reprimand beef with the wrong color, ochre color. We probably will be about two years for the design process. So that's a 30% plan set, 60% completion, 90% and 100%. And we'll weave in right-of-way planning and acquisition through the design process. Once we know the footprint is certain, certainty on the footprint, then we can move forward with any right-of-way impacts.
I, I think it's important to note that the council will have representation on the stakeholder groups. So if the council has a preference or a direction that they would like attended, that they would use that representation on the stakeholder group to do that. The council will be approving the final recommendation brought forward by the stakeholder group. So the council will not be selecting two, within two or three options. They will be, they will be adopting the recommendation from the stakeholder group. Just, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the, the schedule? Okay, so the next steps, these are just kind of the next couple of touches that will be happening. Again, technical working group, we're, I think we're meeting the 19th, February 19th. And then we're hoping to get our first stakeholder group the first week of February. We've also got our project website under development, so there will, that will get that fired up hopefully late February, early March, and that will get some information out to the public as well. We plan to do an open house in March to announce the alternatives. And we'll come back in April here for a second council presentation to announce the top two alternatives. Again, it shouldn't be a surprise since we will have council members in our stakeholder group. And then an open house in June showing the ranking of the top two alternatives and then a council presentation in June to announce the chosen, to announce the recommendation, I guess, for the preferred alternative. That's all I had for formal presentation. Are there any new questions?
One more from me. My understanding was there was an interest in looking at perhaps an alternative site for a bridge that was closer to the school. Is that part of your scope or are you looking at replacing the bridge within the outline or?
That will really fall out of the alternatives analysis process. There could be concepts presented. It's an alternate bridge location and then a ranking of the criteria such as construction cost, right-of-way impacts, environmental impacts associated with that alternative will be developed. And so it could be that if, if that is one of the alternatives that we look at, but the construction cost is not crazy, but then you have a significant right-of-way impact cost that puts you over the 23 million, that, that would be something we're looking at in the process. We'll have to work through that.
I guess I have to give one more question and that is if the levy project gets delayed, could you move forward with the bridge construction? Or are they really dovetailed and dependent on each other?
The way that I've seen the current levy plans and where the barrier, the walls need to be for the levy, it's kind of on the outskirts of the bridge project because of the elevations of the existing bridge. It's more on the perimeter of the Kirk Cobe Memorial. And so we, we could, I believe, work through the bridge project if we jumped ahead of the levy. But also know that they're coming in behind us and what could we do in our project to not create throwaway work for them? Does anyone on council have any questions? Deborah, thank you for the oral presentation. Very interesting.
Oh, mayor's report. Okay. I just wanted to let you know that this is, it's scary job being in the industry. But I'm really excited to do it and I, I hope that, that the council and I can work really well together and get a lot of things done for our community. And then on another, another note, I went to the transportation board meeting the other day and found out that they're going to be installing about 20 new bus stops, enclosures. And that they're a little different from the designs that they currently have, that they're going to be using a, a clear metal, which I didn't really get a grasp of how metal can be clear, but less chances for graffiti to hold up better for vandalism. And then they're also going to have a partial front closed so that a wheelchair person will be able to pull inside of the enclosure and be out of the wind. Anyway, so their, their plan is to install about 100 of these, but the first year they're going to start at 20. So that's kind of exciting if you ride the bus. If you don't ride the bus, it's free right now, so it's really good time to try it. That's all I have for my report. So next on the agenda, council members report.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes. I just wanted to mention that over the end of the last two weeks in December, the holidays, I took the opportunity to meet with Chief Golding at the fire station, the main facility, toured through that, definitely got a good feel and understanding of what their needs are and what the deficiencies of the facility are. That was very helpful. I want to thank Chief Golding for that and for his time. And if council members here who have not gone through the facility yet, I really highly recommend it. You know, you'll get a, a much better idea of what's going on. And then I also took an opportunity to do a ride-along with one of our patrol officers in the police department. That was also very informational and eye-opening. It was very good. And again, I encourage all you council members, if you haven't done it, to take advantage of that, get out and do it. Thanks. Any other council members? Staff reports, so I'll look in the floor up to the city administrator.
Thank you, mayor. I'm really happy to hear that you took advantage of that opportunity to meet with the fire department and take a tour. I did one myself a few weeks ago and, and really enjoyed it and got to ride along with them as well on, on the number called. It's, it's incredible that just when they get back to the station, they're getting called again out to another call. So I also wanted to bring, bring forward that we will be coordinating dates with you to tour a lot of the different facilities that the city owns, like the Malinowski Dam, the water intake and treatment plants and the wastewater treatment plant. So to include the fire station, police stations, things like that. So please keep an eye, eye out for the email and the directors will reach out to directly those tours to you as well. I also wanted to just kind of put on your radar that we want to start the budget process early this year. We also want to get strategic planning in place. So last year, the city council created a strategic plan with goals and a mission and a vision for the city. So this would be a really good time early on in the, in the year to review the strategic goal that we have set and just to make sure like, what did we accomplish in the last year? And what is 2024 going to look like for us? So I think that there are some potential dates and I wanted to get a feel if you were open to the idea of doing this. Last year, we did this on a weekend. We took two Saturdays and we worked through this. And we can also use the off Wednesday of no meetings to do a workshop in the evenings. So I'll send an email out to all of you to kind of gauge what works best for you, maybe a doodle poll. So I'm just keeping an eye out for that as well. I'd also like to announce that we are working with the, we've been working all day with the More Right Group and the Union Gospel Mission to ensure that there's some sort of emergency shelter available during the cold snap. Again, this is just during the cold snap. It's not for the entire winter. And so I would really like to thank council members Morrison, Allison Pericini, who expressed an interest and felt that there was a need to bring one. More Right Group will have evening services or, you know, evening warming shelter. And then during the day, the Union Gospel Mission will offer services to people as well. So and I think that is about it for me. We did have the legislative send-off last week. Just one more thing. We are, the homeless response committee did create a legislative lunch pager and we were able to give that to all of our representatives and senators there at the meeting. So just know that the shelter, we are making a great movement with the shelters. So hopefully we'll have some good views in the future for fund, future funding. So I really want to applaud the work of the homeless response committee. They are now starting to take on the, the role of lobbying and advocating for the city at the state level. So thanks again. Are there any questions on my report? Oh, yes.
Was there any flood, flood damage or is there flooding during the high water?
Short answer, no. Where we, as soon as we started getting the rainfall and the, the storm coming in, we started tracking with work orders and our time just to make sure, but I don't believe there's going to be a declaration. There was enough damage. DOT had some, but, but we didn't have any.
Is, is the city going to be asked by the Redmore Group or is there any other body to assist financially or otherwise with the temporary shelter? And do we need to consider how we might approach that before the next council meeting?
The More Right Group did not have any financial requests of the city. It sounds like they're able, they, they budgeted for something like this and so they, they won't be making any requests, nor will the Union Gospel Mission. But we did, we have a request from another community resource group. But because there seems to have, we seem to have coverage. If the council wants me to consider that, I can definitely bring that request forward. It was for like the amount of like $3,000.
I had heard a rumor to that effect and I didn't know if we needed to make a motion to have funds.
have funds available from the contingency fund of the council or anything.
Oh, right. And it, it would be an unbudgeted item, so, um, it would have to go through the finance committee. We have to go through the process of getting that done. And I can bring that forward if the council would like to, um, pursue that. But again, the services are being provided by both the Union Gospel Mission and the More Right Group. But if that's the case, if the council wants me to pursue that, all I would need is just a motion to be offered, to authorize me to bring something forward at the next meeting.
Um, we talked about this during our finance committee meeting. And, um, given that the cold weather is coming up this weekend, um, would it be helpful to have council go ahead and approve the use of that money in the event it's needed? Then you've got it in, in your back pocket. Uh, if it's not needed, then that's fine.
Sure. If, if you, if you want me to authorize this, I, I don't know with the weather event coming tomorrow, this group has proposed putting up a tent. They would have to go out and purchase a tent. I don't know that the timing of it, but I think, but yeah, if the council would like to approve that, to authorize me to, um, provide up to three thousand dollars to this group, I could definitely, um, do that if you'd like to.
Some.
Go ahead.
Um, there was some concern that, that a contract would need to be written up and to ensure that public funds weren't being, um, given to a private entity. Um, with what you know about their plans, um, is there an easy way to address that? Or is this something that's gonna take some time and?
No, I mean, with the amount, um, the mayor can authorize it to that amount. So three thousand dollars is a pretty small amount. But yes, but because it's an unbudgeted item, we would have to get authorization.
We do have a motion on the floor by council member Morrison to approve that if there was.
Oh, seven.
Okay, perfect.
I didn't hear that.
Any more discussion on it?
Um, I would have really liked to have heard and understood that there was something more definitive. Sounds kind of loosey-goosey right at the moment, and, and, um, I think if I knew that they had a definite plan, they knew what they were gonna do, they knew what their costs were gonna be, I'd probably be in favor of allocating the funds. And I'm not so sure I want to do that.
They do not have like a definite plan. They were trying, they were kind of waiting to see if there were other groups that would step up and, and.
And it sounds like that's covered.
Hmm, correct.
Okay.
And if I may add that a ton of work has gone on in the last few days of a lot of scrambling by a lot of different parties um, to be responsive to this cold weather that's coming. And, um, you know, ideally, we'd have a plan in place before the cold weather, but, um, it's really fantastic that the city's moving forward and the, um, uh, other entities are stepping up to help if they can. And if, if it turns out that a tent can be bought, it was, um, my understanding, a big tent that could provide people who are outside with a warm place to be um, during the cold weather. It's not a small tent, it's a big tent. And, uh, not everyone's going to be able to stay indoors. Um, and this would be, we have one more option for folks to have. It's been mentioned that in previous winters, there's been frostbite and, um, people have died on the street. And, uh, if we can be proactive in this partnership, that would really be wonderful.
The more we, we provide, would it be an overnight shelter or is it a very?
Yeah, the same question as well. I want to know if there's any other thing.
Yeah, it would be overnight. The More Right Group is providing the overnight, and the Union Gospel Mission has the day center, the day one week. So they would provide breakfast, that's then lunch, and then the Union Gospel Mission would have dinner. Or, I guess they both are gonna be providing dinner.
Uh, and how about, um, hotel vouchers? Normally, when it gets really cold, their cap provides hotel vouchers.
Yes.
You know, which would seem like a warmer, better alternative than a three thousand dollar tent.
Yeah, cap.
Yeah.
Cap did receive additional funding from the county to increase the hotel vouchers. I believe that they said their housing could be thirty-four families or thirty-four groups.
Any more discussion?
I would just like to thank for her efforts and for doing so. It's a big undertaking, I'm sure, and I would still thank you. Thank you.
So we're, we're, uh, we're gonna be voting now on whether to authorize the three thousand dollars. And all in favor?
I, I think.
Only if they can't provide themselves.
Okay, so that was all of this. All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes. All right, um, uh, directors, are there any directors have a report to give? No. Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on. Committee reports. I open the floor to the finance chair.
We have a report from finance recommending that the city council adopt the amendment to the indigent defense contract extending it through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. I move that we adopt this report.
Second. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have a report from finance recommending that the city council authorize the surplus of the portable aluminum fence panels and metal posts to be sold at public auction and the proceeds deposited in Parks Fund One O Two. I move that we adopt this report.
Second. Any discussions?
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, I had sent a question earlier to, uh, city administrator Clemens about possibly repurposing the fencing and wondering if we were able to get an answer.
I'm not, but I, Stacy, uh, Director Barnum is here and probably answer that question. My apologies.
No, that's fine.
Did you have something in mind for a representative?
If we needed down at River State Street or for any, a potential site, um, for shelter, anything, I would just, it would seem prudent to me if we can find another use for it down the road, hang on to it rather than have to buy new with the way inflation was.
Oh, I'll make an offer to the Public Works Department if they'd like to have it.
You're on the cover.
Even if it's surplus.
We can talk tomorrow. Is there any more discussion? We have a motion to authorize the sale of surplus and team posts. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next, we have a report from finance recommending that the city council authorize the surplus of the Parks Department nineteen ninety-one utility trailer to be sold at public auction and the proceeds deposited in the Park Equipment Rental Reserve Fund Five O Two. I move that we adopt this report.
Second, and I think that means proceeds instead of process.
Yeah. All right, any discussions? Okay, we have, uh, a motion, um, which we're gonna vote on whether Parks Department can sell their nineteen ninety-one utility trailer and use the money in their park, or in their rental reserve fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And next, uh, we'll move on to public safety. Council, council member Morrison.
Okay, first up, I'll start with the City of Aberdeen Fire Department. Their total calls for service for twenty twenty-three were six thousand two hundred and eighty-six, which is a one percent increase um, over the, oh, it's a historical high for Aberdeen Fire Department. This represents a forty-six point six percent increase over the past ten years. Um, their homeless response data for the month of December twenty twenty-three, they have, uh, between EMS and fire, forty-five total calls. Um, year to date, one thousand three hundred and thirty-four overdose response data. There were thirteen overdoses and year to date, two hundred and thirty-one. Um, the fire specialist report, um, fifty-two public contacts were made in December, six of which were home visits, twelve health checks at the Aberdeen Senior Center, six business inspections. Um, they had a Lions Club bike giveaway, uh, on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The Aberdeen Lions Club helping bike giveaway, where they donated approximately thirty bikes to people in need. With the help of a grant received from the Twin Star Credit Union, the Aberdeen Fire Department was able to give each person who received a bike a free helmet. This has been an ongoing partnership with the Aberdeen Lions Club, the Fire Department, when Fire Department has been able to ensure that the needed safety equipment is available to those in need. Uh, moving on to the police department. Their activity report, um, for twenty twenty-three saw calls six ten, six, six, six point six, seven percent lower from their record high in twenty twenty-two. The five-year average from twenty nineteen was thirty-three thousand six hundred and forty-three, and last year was down three percent from that average. They responded to a hundred and nine calls for service on State and River Streets in the month of December. And, uh, this is the last call for the Citizens Academy. Um, we start January eighteenth. They go every Tuesday from six thirty to eight thirty P M. Attendees will learn about all aspects of the job and spend time driving on their fours, uh, going to the range, and they will also visit the nine-one-one dispatch center and corner's office. Um, they will be placing free, uh, radar L E D signs throughout the city here shortly. And with the incredible generosity of our community, the Fire Department and A P T members were able to deliver Christmas presents to nine Aberdeen children from nine families in the annual Giving Tree Program. The local longshoreman union also jumped in and purchased twenty-two ice serpents. The program has grown. In four years, we look forward to continuing to help as many kids as we can. And the committee has one item on the agenda this evening. A report from public safety recommending that the city council authorize the fire chief to execute the forest land response agreement amendment between the Aberdeen Fire Department and the Washington State Department of Natural Resources. I move to adopt this report.
Second. Motion. This been first and second. Is there any discussion? Dean, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And, and motion passes. Right, um, now I open the floor up to Public Works Committee Chair Vice President, or Committee Vice Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have, uh, good reports here. A report from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize a public works director to execute supplement agreement number one with H G R for the U S one-on-one safety improvement project. I move to be adopted for.
Second. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Director Schengers, hoping you could elucidate this a little bit. I assume this is the Summer Avenue one-on-one sidewalk, uh, improvement transportation alternative grant acceptance? Is that what we're voting on right now?
No.
No?
This is a supplemental agreement with our, our consultant, uh, H G R.
Where does the grant agreement, this that was in our package, come into, uh, play on, under Public Works?
We also have received additional funds for the project, so that's. Is that what you're talking about?
Is that B? All right, thank you.
Any more discussion? Uh, we have a first and a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And now we have a report from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize the mayor and public works director to sign all applicable S- W S D O T documents to accept and authorize the grant funds through W S D O T local programs. I move to adopt this report.
Second. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Okay, now, question. So under fiscal impact, it's checked in the, in the budget, no. Supplemental budget, yes. But then under budgetary status, it says funds have already been authorized in this year's budget. I'm confused.
Okay, so, um, the, the process is we apply for money for a project, and that was the Summer Street Sidewalk. We received, uh, I believe it was a four hundred thousand dollar grant. Initially, the project was over a million dollars, a million or something. So we use our T P D money as, as, as our grant match. So then what happens, as soon as we get that initial right, we then go out to other funding sources and try to get other funding to offset our T P D match. So it is, it is approved, it is budgeted, because we were gonna use our T P D money. So what's happened is we're offsetting the money that the city actually has to pay with new funding source coming in and replacing it. So now we have T P D money for something else.
I love it. Great, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The next, a report from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign all that applicable W S D O T documents for the, the obligation of grant funds received in twenty nineteen and refund the seventeen million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, forty-nine, uh, through the three of those sitting on the money. I move to adopt this report. So seventeen dollars.
Seventeen dollars.
Seventy thousand. Making me nervous.
I'm waiting still.
Is there any more discussion?
Was there a second?
Second. Okay, no discussion. All in favor?
Do we need an amendment on that to clarify it was seventeen thousand?
It's not.
Okay.
I caught it.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
A report from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize a public works director to execute tax order number twenty-six with H B R engineering for the Ravens Street Station project. I move to be adopted for this report.
Second. First and second, is there any discussion? Dean, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
A resolution, a resolution amending, adopted, revised, and extended six-year transportation improvement by, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. Ask, motion, or first and second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one.
That's all from Public Works. Now, what, next, uh, item on the agenda, I'd like to open the floor to the council president.
Okay, um, special agenda items. I have a report from the Parks Director recommending that the city council amend the memorandum of understanding with our Aberdeen regarding a mural to allow replacement of the Aberdeen Fire Engine mural in place of the transportation mural with a maximum size of twenty feet high and thirty feet long. I move to adopt this report.
Now, I have a question.
We need a second.
A second.
Any second?
Any discussions?
Yeah, discussion in the, in the Arts Council meeting, we, uh, discussed the tableists until we get further along in the museum refurbishing process with the site. Once, once we know what we're gonna do more with the building and, and scope of art of the building, that we can more sign.
So it's a motion.
The motion, the tables, until we get our construction process and timing with, uh, sign.
Can I comment or? Do it, I mean, or is that, and there's a motion?
Yeah, it is motion.
It's second.
Okay, now there's discussion.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to say, I, I think it's a good idea to, to have a mural painted, so the money is there and it's gonna go away. If, and that the mural could always be taken down later when we're gonna do something with the building. As opposed to not having the mural painted and losing the money. That, that would be out of mural that we could have. We could always locate it at some other spot. So that's just my, my council personnel.
Um, I, I had, um, a couple of concerns with this. One, that the city isn't going to own the artwork. Um, and, and that we're asked to approve the artwork before it goes up. It sounds like it's going to be different than what's presented in this picture. It sounds like it's going to be different than what's presented in this picture. And, um, but my main concern is like a council member, we can, we're waiting to hear back from a consultant on what work that building is going to need. And it may well be that they need access to the outside to get stabilizing plates put in or whatever. And I'd rather not put the cart before the horse and we find out what the building needs before we move forward with this project. I also pointed out a, um, a line item in the contract that I want to make sure gets corrected if, if, um, if this is approved. And that is that the, um, if there's any disagreement, that the place where any court activity will take place would be Grace Harbor County and not Grant County.
Is there any other discussion? Council side.
I think I've got a number of questions on this that I don't have enough information on. I'd like to try to see if we can get a little more information. Maybe Director Barton could address some of these questions. So right now, it seems to me that what we're being asked to do is to vote to allow the placement of the mural. It's not saying when it will be done or to fund it or anything like that. So I guess that's my first question. This is just to vote to allow the mural, right?
No, there's a, there's a agreement in place already that's allowing a mural to be placed. They're asking to have a different mural placed on the building.
Okay, um, has it already been funded? Have funds been set aside for it?
That's up to the group. The city's not paying for it.
Okay.
I believe this.
And if, if there's a, if there's a delay, if we say, yeah, you can do it, but it doesn't, I mean, I, I just heard somebody comment about funds being lost. Their funds going to go away?
They will be lost.
And how much time is available?
We'll probably do it. May I speak with?
Thank you, appreciate it.
This has been fully funded. It is anticipated that we would do this sometime between April and June.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Okay.
I repeat, this is put on board just exactly like the Nevada mural was on the, on the more building and was moved to the building on the corner. This can be removed at any time.
Okay.
Can be put back at any time.
Okay.
It could be put inside the building.
So it's not going to be painted on the building, on the side of the?
On board.
Got it.
They'll be screwed into the board.
Got it.
There's no way you can paint on that kind of, of, of a texture.
Okay. And is it going to be?
I'd like to call a point of order that this is not the time for comment from citizens that, that questions should be directed to Director Barton.
Well, I appreciate the information that's been provided. Thank you, sir. And this is going to be based on the sketch that was included in our packet or something different?
Yes, based on the sketch.
All right.
Provided by our Aberdeen. So the Arts Commission met yesterday, reviewed the information that Lee Bacon provided, and had a pretty lengthy discussion about the mural project. And they voted to bring a recommendation to you, as Councilman Gaken mentioned, to table this and not take action at this time, not just because of the construction of the building, but they had some other concerns which were outlined in the email that I provided.
Okay, so I'm confused because this doesn't say on here to table it. This just says to amend it to allow the placement. Or am I voting? If I vote yes, is that going to mean I'm saying, yes, go ahead and, and do the mural? Or is that yes to table it?
What's on, what's on the motion? The motion on the floor currently is to table this.
Table it, all right.
Right, so the committee report was provided with the agenda packet last week. For an amendment. The, the City Arts Commission met again yesterday.
Got it.
Mr. Gaken represents the council on that commission.
Got it.
And so that's why he brought the table today.
You've answered all my questions, thank you.
Can I ask a question? I'm just wondering how the, how the money has to be used by a certain time or it's lost.
I can answer that. It's a grant that they received and they have a certain amount of time to use it or lose.
And then, and then is that time?
It's already expired.
It's already expired.
If the mural is not painted, then they'll lose the money.
Director Barton, if you want to answer that.
They've already got.
For the original mural, um, the presentation given to the council, I think it was in August of twenty-two, was time sensitive. They were going to lose the money. They had donors that were going to pay for it, so the council had to make a decision right away on whether or not to do the transportation mural. So now here we are, a year and a half later, and now there's a new project. And I guess the funding is, is time sensitive as well. But this is all happening really fast regardless of the funding. And that's why the City Arts Commission recommends that you table it and don't move forward in this way.
Any more discussion?
I'd like to bring up that there's no discussion to table it. Then the biggest really had was a toll by twenty sign and not even the twenty like this. So it will be, it needs to be tabled until we can get a better understanding of what actually. So to my understanding, basically, we're going to table it and then lose it. That's what it's coming down to. That's my understanding.
So as the money will be lost.
Yes.
It, it goes back to the, to the. It is town money. Any more discussion? So now we're voting on tabling it. And we had a first and a second, two, and all in favor?
I.
And this is, yeah, to table the item. One more time, I'm sorry, all in favor?
I.
Oppose?
No.
No.
I call for a roll call, though.
Carter?
Mayor.
Ellis?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
You do not want to table it?
Oh, yes.
Hodgkin?
No.
Lauren?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ubel? Pericini?
No.
Fredo?
Yes.
Seedorf?
No.
Taylor?
No.
As tied six to six, Mr. Mayor, you will have to make the deciding vote. You both know to not to table the item.
Right. And one clarification. So then do we need a motion to go ahead and approve allowing the mural placement to proceed?
We have a motion on the floor already by the county president Morrison, seconded by council member Hodgkin. So now we will need to vote on that item.
Thank you.
All in favor? Oppose?
No.
Passes.
That's your first time recording it, right?
Okay, I just have to catch up now because you threw me off. Okay, now I have a proclamation here. A proclamation brought by the city, brought to the city by the Aberdeen School District and Miller Junior High. Would like, I'd like to read the proclamation again. Also, whereas, whereas this Aberdeen School District, George V Miller Junior High School opened for its first day of classes on January twenty-eighth, nineteen twenty-four, and was the very first junior high school established in the state of Washington. Whereas Miller Junior High School was built to better meet not only the academic, but the equally important social, emotional, and physical, physical mentoring needs for the vast adolescents who are no longer young children and not yet young adults. Whereas Miller Junior High School originally enrolled students in grades seven, eight, nine. The school now serves grades six, seven, and eight. Whereas Miller Junior High is the one place in our city where the majority of the community members of the same age are gathered in one building at the same time for half of the day, days of the year. Whereas the relationships developed at this age by students, staff, families, and others are an asset to building a stronger sense of community in our city, state, and country. Whereas the importance of celebrating our history is a cornerstone to the development of success of our future. And whereas the occasion of Miller Junior High's one-hundredth anniversary, this school of Aberdeen enthusiastically celebrates the accomplishments of its students and the dedication of its staff, past, present, and future. Therefore, the resolve that I, as the sole mayor of the City of Aberdeen, do hereby proclaim January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four as George P. Miller Junior High School Hundredth Anniversary Day in the City of Aberdeen, Washington. In witness whereof, I have fear to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city to be affixed on this tenth day of January in the year two thousand twenty-four. Mayor of Aberdeen. Right? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this proclamation.
So I move.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? That, that, that's for passes, thank you. Uh, okay. Now, tonight we have reappointments for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And Danny Bacon from our Aberdeen is on that committee. Bobby McCracken from Downtown Aberdeen Association. Jackie Elsos from Best Western Plus. And Lisa Blanchard from Best Western Plus. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint these members to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Go move.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, this, for council member Ellis.
Thank you. Um, I would, I, um, some of these members have served on the LTAC Advisory Committee year after year after year. And I would like to encourage that next year we look to broaden the representation and get some new folks onto this group.
Council member Ellis, this is just extending their term through February due to the need to continue the vote because of our motion at the last meeting. But a new group will still be appointed for their term in December.
Thank you, guys.
We, that's exactly what I'm, because I went back to the Lodging Tax Committee, their terms expire that month.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Thank you, motion passes. And next we have a reappointment of Leslie Goings for Park, uh, to the Parks Board. And I want to entertain a motion to reappoint Leslie to the Parks Board.
Hello.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion passes. All right, so now we're back to public comments and I'll open the floor to the public. Please leave your conversations to three minutes.
I need to drink a binge. I just drink my own. Um, my name is Lynette Taylor. Um, I'm a volunteer. And, um, I have I'm just a lady person and I don't understand the thing of public works number C, a report from Public Works recommending that the City Council authorize the mayor to sign all applicable articles, um, W S D O T documents for the obligation of grant funds received in two thousand nineteen and refund in seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-nine cents of the previously reimbursed grant money. Does that mean that, that we have to pay back that money? And did we spend it already? And if so, lose responsible for paying it back? I mean, that's a lot of money and it just confuses me a little.
I'll respond. This project is for sidewalks, sidewalks on the, on the west side of Boon Street. We have, we had two projects at the same time, one we called it Gickenick, which is Grace Harbor College Neighborhood Connection. And then this project, we, we had two projects in for grant funding, uh, not knowing which one was going to be funded. We got funding for the Gickenick project, which was sidewalks on the far side of the street. And those sidewalks and drainage had been put in. And that, that created that conduit from the area to the college. That was, that was the important thing. We applied for, we had money in for both. We then got, um, we were successful in getting money also for the other side, which we didn't anticipate getting money for both sides, but we got money for the other side. And when that project, it was, it's much later in the process. When that project came through, what I was talking about early about using our T P D money as leverage for other projects, we weren't able to secure any more funding for that project. So we had, we had a grant, it was three hundred fifty or so thousand dollars for that, of which we spent seventeen thousand in the planning and analysis. But the project was going to be a million too. So we were going to have to spend another eight hundred thousand of city money to finish that project when we already had sidewalks on the other side of the street and accomplish what we were, what we were trying to do. So we decided that we would give back the seventeen thousand that we'd already been reimbursed for through the analysis process. So that we save our eight hundred thousand and apply it to another project that was more important. And so that's, that was the process right there.
Okay. Now, that's still, that's still going to kind of clarify that. I understand that one hundred and one was and one wasn't, but do we owe them that money? Our way.
We owe them seventeen thousand dollars, which was our match, which is what we
Okay.
billed back towards the grant for our engineering time. We have an engineering department, they did an analysis, they did some preliminary work. We build that to the grant. We decided not to move forward with that project. So we have to pay back seventeen thousand that we are, we've already received money for.
And who's paying that? That's my question.
The city.
So the, is that a new tax that we're going to be taxed?
That is our three minutes. And just a reminder to the public and the council, this is a period for council comment. And if you do have questions and concerns and you'd like to reply back, you can contact staff or council members either after or before the meeting.
Any more comments? Let's all. All right, is there anything else? I'm sorry.
I know I'm short, Doug, but Sylvia Dickerson, Ward four. Concerning the LTAC appointments, I served on the LTAC committee for many years. And one of our Aberdeen's goals, a nonprofit that I have worked for in the past, um, has done is to promote things in the city for people to do. Tours to take of the downtown area and to bring things to the attention of people traveling through the city and staying here. Two of the members of the LTAC committee that you have just, um, in spots from Best Western will not permit any brochures in their hotel. And they advise people staying there not to go downtown because downtown is not safe. So you've just shot yourself in the foot. They need a little education because they're not going to operate in the spirit of law.
That's two more here.
My name is Andy Thomas, and I'm Ward five. And I'd like to take this time to welcome Doug and wish him well, and welcome all the councilmen here for the Sunday, stepping up and taking on the job. And, and I'd like to remind you that you are the legislative body. And and I'd like to remind you that you are the legislative body of the City of Aberdeen. And the mayor is the administrator. So you make the laws and the codes and you decide everything. And the mayor will administrate that and see that that is done to his people. And I hope that you will take the time to really study that and learn. And the councils start joining together and seeing what they can do for the city and not stand there and wait for somebody else to come up with an idea. Because I come to council meetings a lot and have done it for many years. And what I really think is is the other way around. And I'd like to see that change. And I'd just like to see you look at that. Another thing I'd like to say, I was really disappointed in the vote to give cats three thousand dollars. Do you have have any idea how many millions and millions and millions of dollars goes to that place and does not get used? He is setting on two, three point two five million grants, but he's never even started the projects. He got four plots of lands for five thousand dollars in for the city. He's never started the project. His Taj Mahal is paid for. He owns the Savior Center. He owns the general building. And the money that he has get, he has to bend the county leases to clean the city up. And he does nothing for the city. He won't even let the homeless people hang around there. They don't even get to go into building on the service side during the vote. You stop and think when it comes to ask for more about giving more. And one last thing before my chimes up. When it comes time, the city has to purchase more fencing again. I'm going to come back and remind you, we should have saved what we have. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for approving the proclamation. That's been a big part of our education. And and also, one thing I forgot to mention, the next day when we start our second hundred years, we're going to take an all-school picture. What we want to do is purchase a t-shirt similar to this one for every student and staff member. So we're going to have an all-school picture that will go in the museum and be at school. And so we're selling the shirt that I'm wearing now as a fundraiser. And so I put some order forms back there if you want to call the school. We've got some, and then we can order those, too. And you mentioned ride-alongs. Thirty years ago, I was in the second Citizens Academy when Bill Ellison was chief. And I did a ride-along then. And then I used to ride with Pete Churneski, who was on my stool board and a great police officer here. And I used to ride at night with him. And after living here for twenty-five years, at two and three o'clock morning, I saw a city I didn't know existed. So I would encourage you to do a night ride-along, too, sometime.
I have retired from R. Aberdeen, so they won't see me too much anymore. I want to thank you. The question was raised as to who owns the mural that was put in at the city request. If the city wants to take ownership, we would be glad to give it to you as soon as it's finished. It was put in there so we'd be responsible for any maintenance or any review. But I was speaking on something that really disturbs me this evening. I heard the consultant saying that people from all over the world come to visit the Kirk Coven Park. They do not. They come from all over the world to come and see the Kirk Coven Bridge. If you ripped up the park, it wouldn't make the Herald Tribune impair it. But I guarantee you, if you take that bridge down, it'll make every paper in Europe or at least most of them. The simple solution that I would like to have considered is to leave that that bridge in place. That way, you don't have to remove the utilities. Nothing has to be changed. You put a new bridge to the east side of it that meets the current conditions. As soon as the new bridge is built, then you stop using the old bridge. This means you don't have to build a temporary bridge. And the new bridge will serve as what the needs that you have. And the old bridge will maintain its its worldwide appeal. I am not a Coven fan. I'm speaking for what could bring people to Aberdeen. People come to Aberdeen to see that stupid bridge. I don't, I mean, I was here two years before I figured out where it was. But I really suggest strongly that you avoid an awful lot of difficulty if you consider that the bridge, new bridge, needs to be built to the east of the old. And the old needs to be maintained, even if it's truncated. You could truncate it, but that wouldn't solve the utility problem. If you just leave it in place, you have all this expensive moving utility. You leave it in place, now it has to be changed. And that seems makes some sense to me. And I don't understand why the consultant kept harping on the park has to be saved. The people want the bridge saved. Thank you very much.
Anything else for good of the order? Are we under good of the order now in the public comments? Two items that are good of the order I forgot to mention earlier. Under Finance Committee, we met tonight. And one of the things that we requested and the clerk indicated would be able to be done is on our monthly homeless response worksheet, the top of the page always reflects the number of Aberdeen Police and Fire Department calls and responses, but doesn't show an effective equivalent dollar figure of kind of how much does that really represent in terms of resources, monetary resources? Even if they're not directly spending the funds, it's it's staff time, it's manpower, person power, all that. So we've asked for a dollar equivalent figure to be added to these reports that wouldn't show at the bottom line total of what was spent, but would give the council an idea of kind of how much of the equivalent monetary resources the city are going to police and fire responses. And the second item for good of the order, I'd like to remind all council members before we leave tonight, to please drop off your committee preference sheet. Put it right down there. And then I'd also like to ask the Committee on Committees if they wouldn't mind please staying tonight, and we can proceed to do the job we need to do. Thank you.
Councilmembers, either I would like to go back to your first point. I don't have numbers for the Aberdeen Police Department, but the Fire Department does break down their dollar figures as best that they can. So for the month of December, it was four thousand, four hundred fifty dollars.
And that's what we noted. We noted that, but we want to actually put it on this report, this monthly report. Because I think it would be helpful. And I know the Fire Department already does that. Thanks, Keith Golding. I don't know how difficult it might be for the police to do that, but
Well, we're not really set up to do that with our dispatching program. So we don't have the ability to differentiate how many officers are, I mean, we can tell you how many officers are on. We don't feel like the Fire Department does per call like that. Okay, that's not something we can
Is there any way to estimate like approximate amount of time involved?
We could, but I think the challenge is going to be for us, like if an officer, for example, says he's interrupt that call, and then within two minutes, the call's canceled.
Okay.
So then are we going to like go through, we had a hundred and three, I think, last month.
Okay.
It would be quite intensive for us.
All right. Well, whatever whatever can be done, and I appreciate what the Fire Department does. And if they can continue to do that, we can put it on this report. That would be good, I think.
Yes, I'm just wanting to give Councilmember Hodgkin a nudge that you have inherited the seed that traditionally gets the clothes as out.
Yes, Stan. Stan gave me the the green light. So I do too, Charlie.
Second.
Well, two weeks.
I didn't know.
Obviously, they're more sophisticated than our colleagues.
Yeah. You know, we're
It's not control, but I do that.
Oh, no. I got it. I guess for my daughter. I'm just going to be a nobody doing beats on Sami.